And Mayor, when we go to approve the agenda, I will be recommending that we remove the executive session. It is no longer needed.
It's no longer needed. Okay. Thank you. So we really might get out of here before midnight, everybody.
Hey, that's good.
Okay, council and everyone, I officially call this meeting to order. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you all so very much. Ms. Martinez, would you please take the role?
Yes, sir. Captain Mayor Coleman.
Here.
Counselor Broyles.
Here.
Counselor Hensley.
Here.
Counselor Grego.
Present.
Counselor Veho.
Here.
And counselors Daniel and Carson previously requested to be excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next on the agenda is the agenda approved.
Mayor, staff would recommend that we remove the executive session. It is no longer needed.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. Counselor Grego.
I'll make that motion that we approve the agenda as amended.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
Do you have to excuse Counselor Carson and Counselor Daniel?
Yes, that's, I'll add that also to Counselor Veho.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Veho. Okay, we have a motion and a second, no further discussion. Ms. Martines, will you take the role?
Yes, sir. Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
Counselor Veho.
Yes.
Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda is the citizen comment section. This is the part of the agenda to where we allow citizens to make comments. We do ask that you keep your comments to three, under three minutes. If you are still talking at the three-minute mark, I will politely ask you to end at that particular time. Ms. Martinez, will you please give those who are in the audience to unmute so that they can be heard during this part?
Yeah, so if you're in the attendee list and you want to speak right now for citizen comment, I need you to raise your hand by clicking the raise your hand button in the bottom of your screen. If you're on the telephone dial star nine. Okay, and I've got one. I've got Glenn. I believe this is Glenn Hodges.
Okay, and so is he announced where he could start making comments right now?
Yes, he's Glenn. Are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. Go ahead and start, Glenn.
Good evening, Alamos City Council. My name is Glenn Hodges, and I am the Director of Advantage Treatment Centers in Alamosa. And I wanted to let all of you know that we are, our owner has chosen to give away 250 Thanksgiving meals evening, starting at 5:00 PM. So these will be boxed meals that anyone in the community is welcome to come and pick up. Traditional Thanksgiving dinners. We are giving away 250 of those. First come, first served until they're gone. So I sent this information to Heather earlier today. She posted it on the Facebook page. It's been in the newspaper, but please spread the word around. We want as many people as possible to take advantage of this. So I'll use up a few more minutes here. If you're not familiar with Advantage Treatment Centers, we're the former Community Corrections. We offer treatment programs plus the Community Corrections Program. Currently, we house a little over 100 clients. We've been doing really well. Been weathering COVID-19 and learning lots about how to do things a little differently. So thank you for allowing me this time.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you for your generosity. Very good. Appreciate it. Yeah, it's our owner.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Martinez, it looks like we have one other hand up. Is it Gretchen? Can you hear us? Can you?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead and start.
Well, first of all, thank you for listening to me, but I'm coming on tonight a little bit upset with city council. And it has to do with the homeless situation. First of all, I'm very concerned about all the homeless population in the cold weather. And having them down at the rec center is not a very good idea because it's too cold. These people cannot really survive healthfully down there. And I'd like to see some way that La Puente could give them some tickets to leave town to a warmer climate or find housing for them. Otherwise, we're going to have a lot of six people. The other thing I want to bring up is the fact that I'm very upset over all the trash that's been left along the river that needs to be picked up. And since the city knew that this was happening, I think the city needs to be responsible for that. And the third thing I want to bring up, quite frankly, I feel like I've been betrayed by each and every one of you because you said that this was going to be a temporary homeless shelter. Yet you are putting on a name to this. Putting a name to it is making it permanent, and I'm sure that there was some misunderstanding. But when you don't tell the whole truth, you lie. And when you lie, you lose the trust of the people. And I'm being very honest with you. I want you to know that. You're losing the trust of the people. I've done my best to help support in the South Side over here in the community. But it's very, very difficult, very difficult for me to tell people that you are trying to come forward and do the best when I don't get the full truth. And that's all I'm going to say. I thank you for your time, and I don't want to upset anyone, but you need to hear the truth from someone out in the public.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bianca. I don't see any other hands raised right now, Ms. Martinez. So usually what we do is turn it back over to our city manager and city attorney for any follow-up at this point.
Mayor, we just had one more raise their hand. Sinead Diaz.
Okay, go ahead. Sinead Diaz, can you hear us?
Yep, I got you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Awesome. I'd like to speak up as a South Side resident and actually just say thank you to city council because I know you've put in a lot of work and a lot of, I mean, I feel like a lot of compassion. And I actually feel like most of us in the community have to kind of take on the role of really ensuring safety and cleanliness. And I think that it is kind of a personal initiative in a lot of ways. And I do see how each of you is kind of extended beyond your normal kind of day job as well as your roles as city councillors to really understand our homeless community and what's going on. So I think I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you so very much, Sinead. We really appreciate that. Thank you for the. So if anyone else would like to raise their hand, please do so at this time. If not, I will close this session on the agenda and bring it back to our city manager and city attorney for any follow-up comments. Okay, I don't see any hands. I'll go ahead and turn it back over to Ms. Brooks and Mrs. Suezal for follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the questions related to the homeless. I'm not sure if some of you have maybe seen, there's been a bit of a discussion on the Taking Back Alamosa Facebook page as well. A lot of misinformation out there, and it's sometimes surprising because when, when you know the information, you don't always realize other people don't know the information. So this is a good opportunity to maybe provide some information on the homeless situation. So to specifically answer the three items that were brought up in regards to tickets to go somewhere else. Both La Puente and our police officers have the availability to purchase bus tickets. If we do have homeless individuals who are wanting to get to a different location, those resources are available and we are willing to use those tickets to help them get to where they need to connect for services or a warmer climate. The trash along the river, that's the first I've heard of it. Maybe shouldn't have been the first. But what we'll do is take a look at that and identify some of those locations and see if we can look at pulling some volunteers together to look at picking that up. Clearly, with our COVID situation, some of that kind of activities with groups is a little more limited. So we'll see what we can, what we can look at. In regards to the frustration related to thinking that the camp was temporary, it's somewhat harder to address that because, as council knows, when we discussed this at the council meeting, it had started out as looking at for temporary location. We were looking at that location near the cemetery. But the public input that we were receiving related to the bigger issues that the community was facing with some of the homeless issues. And so we pivoted that night during the council meeting and transitioned to a permanent site. And the language is very clear during that meeting. And the YouTube videos are available on the website, as are the minutes every time city council has talked about this, as well as it's been in the newspaper. So we pivoted to identify a site that could, one, we could move quickly on and still serve that COVID need of getting something up and going quickly, but also would be better suited to be a permanent location. And that is the language we have used this entire time. I have no doubt that the individual truly feels that way and did not have that information, which is very unfortunate. But it's something that, from a city perspective, in the language we've used in every meeting that it's come up. And when we've talked with the newspaper or answered questions with the public, it's been that it is a permanent campsite. The other thing I want to address from working on some of the comments on Facebook is it's clear that some people were irritated that tonight we had on the agenda to name the campsite, which was interesting to me because, in all honesty, it's something that's like I expected council to spend one or two minutes on. And that's not the meat of what your work is. But it seems to be that some people think anytime this comes up, we're wasting time or doing those types of things. And it's become clear how much misinformation is out there. One of the reasons we've looked at the permanent location is we had known since 2018 that our hands were legally tied to enforce our no camping ordinances within the city. So if we encountered a homeless individual camping in a park or on a long, along a trail, in an alleyway, or other public rights of way, the police officer could bluff essentially and encourage them to move somewhere else. But if that individual would refuse, unless there is a place to go per that 2018 court decision, the police officer could not force them to move. And we needed to dedicate a location that would be appropriate for them to camp that would allow us to enforce our no camping ordinances. So there's a, there's a very big reason why we transitioned to make it permanent and not just in a response to COVID. When that did happen, we wanted to make sure we were protecting the private property owners that were nearby because the site that we picked, while it's not near any residential homes, it has its property right next to some industrial park properties. And we wanted to make sure that we weren't creating a nuisance for those properties. So we did spend money on a fence and security and cameras and those types of things. I had to calculate it today. So in total, we expect to spend about $59,312. Out of that total, $53,000 of it was for the fence, the security for those types of issues. For the services that are actually for those who are using the campsite, such as the porta potty, the Wi-Fi, the electric, that's been about $6,222. Now, the good news is that all of these are one-time expenses. The ongoing cost is essentially the rental of the porta potties and the small electric bill and the small Wi-Fi. So the ongoing costs are very, very low. So it's important to know as well that, from a city perspective, this campsite was not intended to solve homelessness. It also was not intended to solve what this, this community does not have, which is a warm or a cold weather shelter. That is a significant service. In the past, I believe what would happen is La Puente would clear out their lower level and put some cots in and let individuals go in into the La Puente shelter. Because of COVID and other items, that's not available this year. And so there is a team that is working on a cold weather response on trying to figure out what can be done. But it's not an issue of finding an easy vacant building, which that can be challenging. But you also need to staff it and have volunteers and mental health and substance abuse wraparound. There's a lot that goes around along with that. So it's important to know that while we created this campsite, it did not mean that the city was jumping into everything that was related to homelessness. And then back to my one comment on this isn't going to solve homelessness. It wasn't intended to. It's one piece of the puzzle that we needed to put in place. The other things that city council has done is it's created the Alamosa Homeless Coalition. This group is working to identify what homelessness looks like in our community, what services are available, what are the gaps? And then they will be making recommendations on different strategies to council and other community partners because this is a community issue that we need to come to the table for. In addition to the Homeless Coalition, as I mentioned, we have the Cold Weather Task Force. We also have the COVID Task Force who are working to make sure that if there is a case of a positive COVID incident in the homeless, what we can do with that. So there, we also have work on mental health and substance abuse and what those services are and those processes. So there's a lot that's going on. It's not easy. It's, it's a, it's a really gnarly kind of project is how some communities word it. And then finally, from a long-term perspective, when you're dealing with homelessness, obviously, a key factor is housing. And do we have enough transitional housing and affordable housing? And that's another piece that council's working on by conducting the Housing Assessment Study. And so once that study is done, we will have actual data to know what housing is needed in our community. And so I believe it will identify that we might need transitional and affordable. I also think it's going to identify workforce housing, middle-income housing, and those types of things as well. I think we've got some gaps. And thankfully, through this study, we'll have some actual data that can help guide council on any future decisions. And so it's a big issue. It's a challenging issue. It's, it's one that you want to come at it as Sinead indicated with compassion and heart. But we also want to come at it from making sure we understand from a city perspective what our role should be and what it is not. And, and sometimes that can make those conversations a little bit challenging. So I know I spoke a little bit more than what the issues were raised from just the previous speaker. But it's, it's something I want to make sure to take every opportunity to get accurate information out there related to these efforts. And with that, Mayor, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. I'm not for sure if council have any questions for, for you or not at this time. But if you do raise your hand, and I'll recognize you. If not, we'll move on down the agenda. Okay, I don't see any hands raised, Ms. Brooks. We'll move on down the agenda to the next agenda presentation. I'm sorry. Consent calendar eight.
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez, will you take the vote?
Yes, sir. Mayor Coleman.
Yes.
Counselor Grego.
Yes.
Counselor Broyles.
Yes.
Counselor Veho.
Yes.
Counselor Hensley.
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Is Mayor frozen?
I think he's frozen.
I could pick it up if you want. Okay, so we're going to go to regular business, Section A, Presentation from Outside Agencies, the Care and Share Food Bank for Southern Colorado. Who's here to speak tonight for that?
Lynn, Lynn Telford.
Lynn Telford. Okay, Lynn, it's all yours. If you can, Holly, can you please explain again how to speak?
Oh, she's there.
She's up, okay.
Hello, Mayor Coleman and council members and members of staff. Thank you for letting me present this evening. And I promise to keep it to my 10 minutes so that I don't add to your midnight ending time. Care and Share is pretty excited to be expanding our operations and establishing a distribution center in Alamosa. So I wanted to tell you a little bit about that, about our plans. But I'd like to start by talking a bit about who Care and Share is because while a lot of people have heard of us, many people don't understand our place in the whole nonprofit world. So Care and Share is one of the 200 food banks across America related to Feeding America. We have a contractual relationship with them. And our service area is all of Southern Colorado, so 31 counties. And we've been around almost 50 years. So our headquarters is in Colorado Springs, where we have a 50,000-square-foot distribution center. And right now, we're serving Alamosa and the counties west of Alamosa from Colorado Springs. And you know, there is that big mountain range right through the middle of our service area. So what we do primarily is provide food to other agencies. So for example, the San Luis Valley Food Bank Network, they get 75% of their food from us because we can procure food like nobody's business. Through Feeding America, we have national connections with huge organizations, Walmart and Conagra and Kellogg's and Nestle. So we get great big truckloads of food in. And then we distribute it to our 267 partners across Southern Colorado. We have some other specific programs and things, but that's the main way that we get food to people. And last year, we were able to distribute 22 million pounds of food across Southern Colorado. So it's quite the operation. And we have a smaller distribution center in Pueblo. It's 20,000 square feet, which we added in the 90s. We haven't added any significant capacity to our program for 12 years. And yet, in the last 10 years, we've doubled. So it's really time. And in February, before any of us were talking about a pandemic, our board had a board retreat and came up with some strategic initiatives, three of them. And one of them was to locate our third distribution center in Alamosa. So I was pretty excited about that. And we, I went with some of my staff to visit your wonderful city. And, and we're just really excited to, to locate a distribution center there. We think that it'll look a lot like our Pueblo Distribution Center, which has eight employees and 20,000 square feet. And we work on a hub-and-spoke model. So while a distribution center in Alamosa is going to allow us to serve the western part of our service area, including the San Luis Valley, much better, it's really going to improve our entire logistics throughout Southern Colorado. So we're pretty excited about it. We've identified a building that we plan to make an offer on, but I'm still raising money for that project. I've only raised about a quarter of the money that I need so far. And my board wants me to wait till I have over half before we make a firm offer on the building. But, so I think that you may know where the Budweiser Distribution Center is. That's the building that we hope to be able to acquire. It's 21,000 square feet, so fits our model. 46% of it is cold storage. And cold storage is so important in our work because more and more, we're distributing produce, fresh, good, nutritious food to people, and we're really excited about that. One of the issues right now with not having a distribution center in Alamosa is that we're only getting our trucks over the mountain range once a week. And so we're only getting to our partner agencies once a month. And once a month, produce is not enough. It's not good enough. We're not happy with that. So starting December 1st, we're actually going to use a different model where we have a driver located in Alamosa and do a truck swap. So it's three hours from Colorado Springs to Alamosa. Our truck can get there and back in a day, which is great. And then we'll have a, our truck driver in Alamosa. His name is Paul, and he will swap his empty truck for the full truck and be able to serve that area. It's not as good as having a distribution center, so I'm, I'm really working on that. But, but we're doing more and more towards that end. And I wanted you all, and you know, the public that's listening, to hear about our plans because we want to be part of the community. We don't want just to have a building there. We want to be part of the community. And we want, as we add to staff, to be able to hire some of the great people in Alamosa. We've been out there twice now. I had hoped actually to be out there this week, but the high COVID numbers have made that not sensible. So I am, I'm just really excited about our project. And I'm talking to everybody that I can about it, and I'm raising money for it so that we can bring it to fruition. We accelerated it a little bit because of COVID, but the idea was founded before we knew about COVID. So it's a really solid, good strategic move for Care and Share. And I think it's an exciting thing in Alamosa as well. So I would love to hear any questions that you have about Care and Share or about our plans.
Okay, we have, Ms. Hensley, please.
I don't know if I have any questions right now, but I just, you did a great presentation. You made it very, very easy to understand. So I actually didn't know how this all worked, and so thank you for sharing that. And I'm sure I'll have questions going forward, but this is really exciting. And I just want to thank you for what you do. And then obviously, as part of your strategic plan is the idea of looking to the Southern Colorado, south of obviously Pueblo and stuff, and how to even better fulfill some of the needs there. And I'm hopeful, keep my fingers crossed, that you definitely become part of our community or your organization. May not be you personally, but that you'll make more visits here too, once COVID lifts a little. So I do look forward to someday meeting you in person. And, but thank you for all you do. So I do look forward to someday meeting you in person. And, but thank you for all you do.
Well, thank you. I do plan to be a presence in Alamosa as I am at our other facility. And I, I look forward to being part of the community. We've already joined the chamber. We have a subscription to the newspaper. We're excited.
Mr. Broyles.
I wanted to say thank you. That's a, it's a very good service. My question is, we have a food bank in Alamosa. So are you saying that you, you give that food bank 75% of its produce or?
75% of its food. They reported to us that 75% of their food comes from us. And, you know, and it goes to them with no charge. So we're, we're a charity that just gets food where it's needed so that other people can hand it out to the people in need.
Oh, good, yeah. Yeah, I've, I've worked there three or four times.
It's a great organization.
Helping them with that, with their food. So yeah, I appreciate that. And I think it's a great service. Thank you.
And I think you should also know that you were talking about homelessness earlier, and a lot of homeless people do get our food. But that's about 11% of our food. The most common profile of somebody who accesses food that comes through Care and Share is a single mother who is working. And she may have been doing okay, and then COVID hit, or her car broke down, or she has a medical emergency. Most people access emergency food only temporarily. And I think those are the people we want to help.
Mr. Greggo.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Lynn, thank you so much for choosing Alamosa. You know, I've been out to that Budweiser building and it's, I'm so glad that we're going to finally put some great use to it because those big coolers that used to house all that beer and stuff. You know, now it'd be good for, like you said, for the produce. There's another group that I guess is out there. Will they remain out there? Or how does that work?
So that still has to be negotiated. You know, they're not making use of the building well. But we have talked about either co-locating. They have three more years on their lease. So we could co-locate, we could find another location for them and buy them out of their lease. We don't know exactly how that's going to work yet.
Thank you. Thank you once again.
Anybody else have any comments or questions for Lynn? No, okay. Thank you, Lynn. I had, I had a couple of questions. Just so I can remember what you said. Are you talking, are you saying that you could have eight new jobs with this coming down here?
Yes, not right away. We would ramp up to that.
Okay, thank you very much. And then Mr. Broyles kind of hit on it a little bit. What would your presence do down here to our current food bank?
Sure, they were some of the first people we met with. So Lindsay is excited that there would be more fresh produce available. Also, instead of having to take a great big truckload, they could come pick up food when they need to. So that could solve storage issues for them. So it's, you know, they're a partner because we work well together and we would not be competing with them. They give food directly to people. We primarily give food to agencies. Now, we do direct service when there isn't, where there's a need and we don't have a partner agency. But in this case, you have a great organization here and we would be additive.
Perfect. And then my final question is this is, being that we have so much agriculture down here, would, would you all tap into some of that produce as well? Possibly?
Yes, thank you for that question. So we actually have recently hired somebody to work with local farmers. Right now, about half of our produce comes from Colorado. But we want to make sure that we have good relationships with farmers. Also, that cold storage is bigger than what we need. So we plan to talk to some of our farming partners to see if there's a way we can work together and help them with maybe some of their storage needs as they go to market. We don't have that figured out yet. We don't have the building yet. But we certainly want to partner with local farmers. And we have a budget for buying food too. So we don't just ask farmers to donate. We also buy food. So we want to, we want to help the local farmers that way. And backhauling is a huge thing that we're not able to do right now. So we work closely with Metz Potatoes, for example, out in Montavista. And how great for them, for us to just take those potatoes to our Alamosa Distribution Center instead of all the way to Colorado Springs.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor Coleman has his hand up. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Telford. I just want to thank you very much for the services that you all provide for people here throughout the San Luis Valley. And thank you for a wonderful presentation. Appreciate you.
Thanks very much, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Lynn. Anybody else? Heather, anybody? Okay, Lynn, thank you very much for your presentation tonight. And we are all very excited for what you can, what you can offer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, next, we have under regular business number B. Board Commission Business Appointment of Homeless Coalition Board Member. Holly?
Um, yeah, that's me. So you guys did interview Elizabeth Rivera at, prior to your last council meeting. She applied to be the veteran representative for the homeless board, for the homeless coalition. So you guys do need to appoint her by way of a vote. So your ballots were sent out prior to this meeting. I did receive those back and you guys have voted to appoint her into the position. So if you guys have questions, you can ask them. If not, then we need a motion.
Okay, council, let's, let's get a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Elizabeth Rivera.
Director.
Homeless Coalition Board Member.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Ms. Holly?
Okay, Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Greggo?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. Now we move on to C, Business Brought Forward by City Staff. One A, Motion Naming the Homeless Campsite, St. Benedict Camp for the Homeless.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. The, during the work session, when staff reviewed the items for the homeless campsite, council mentioned that you would like for us to come up with a name other than just a homeless campsite. So me not being the creative person reached out to the homeless coalition to see if they had any ideas. One of the members on the coalition mentioned that St. Benedict is the patron saint for homeless and that this seemed like it would be a fitting name. We, I checked with the whole homeless coalition as well as our task force and the department heads. And we feel like it's a really proper name and, and fitting. We did want to check with the Catholic Church since that is obviously a Catholic saint. And I had a great conversation with Father Uju. Not only did he feel completely comfortable with this, and honestly, he said he, it was, he was honored. But he was also excited to learn about what we are doing and to get some of that information and that we have a representative on the homeless coalition to re, to represent our faith-based. And so I'm going to connect those two because if there's any volunteer efforts or any needs like that, there, there might be a connection there. So it was a very positive discussion. So without anything else, that was the recommendation we were making to council.
Okay, council, any questions or comments? Mr. Greggo?
I, I just wanted earlier, Heather, the way you explained the homeless program and stuff, I really appreciate what you did, you know. I've been on this council for 36 years and I've been called a lot of stuff. But liar, I'm not a liar and I've never, I've, I've always tried to be as transparent as possible. And when somebody comes across and says that you're a liar and they're losing trust in us, it hurts me because I, I, I was born and raised in this community. And I think I've done, my job is representing the people and I know I have trust in my, in my word. So I really appreciate what you, the way you explained it and how, how it came across. So thank you so much for that. And I hope that, I, I don't know who the, who the paper, how the paper covers this or who covers this. But I think that word needs to get out because like you said, there's a lot of misconcepts out there. And the truth needs to get out. So people will know what really is the truth. You know, this secondhand talking and, and rumors and stuff is wrong, you know, and you're right, we're not going to be able to, to help the homeless, you know, work as much as we can, you know. I wish there was a way to help them. But what, what we are doing and how we're trying to find solutions, we're doing something. So we're not just sitting on our hands and saying, well, good luck, guys, you know, good luck homeless. We're doing something. And I think this council, and I've sat with a lot of different councils, has moved a lot of stuff. Homeless, we never, we've had homeless here for way, way back. And so we've done something about it. So I want to thank you first for that, you know, and, and also thank you for choosing St. Benedict as, as, as the name. It is quite fitting, you know. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greggo. Anybody else comment or, or question? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make that motion, Mary, that we name it St. Benedict.
A second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Holly?
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Counselor Greggo?
Yes.
Counselor V Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, Holly. Next, we go to item B. A motion authorizing the creation of a COVID-19 Utility Assistance Program.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As the council knows, the city was fortunate to be able to have, I'm going to look at my notes here, $562,403 in CARES funding. And that money can only be used to help offset the impact of COVID. And we have to use it by December 30th, 2020. So we have used a significant amount of that related to any overtime related to COVID, any PPP, any changes we've needed to make to our facilities such as the, the plastic barriers, the hand washing, our temperature checks, sanitation stations, those types of things. Council approved for us to make the change to the council chamber AV system for approximately 75,000 to help with the hybrid meeting and social distancing requirements. We've also looked at thermometers and the business loans and those types of things. We do feel like we will have somewhere between 25,000 to 75,000 dollars remaining. And we have not really provided any direct assistance to residents. And so that's what prompted this. And I almost forgot one of the other categories that we've used the, the money for. The expansion of outdoor seating for our restaurants and bars downtown has been another big chunk of, of a project for this. So what we felt would be very appropriate if council agrees is to create a utility assistance program. There's other communities in the state, including Montavista, that have created something like this. They have to be a resident of the city. They would be eligible for up to $1,000. We did want to make it open for any utility except for cable or satellite. But we feel like water, sewer, electricity. But we also feel like an internet during this time when kids are doing remote learning and those types of things is a critical resource as well. And a phone bill. We will not be cutting a check to the individual. We would actually be cutting a check to the utility. And so the money will be used for those utilities that are delinquent. We have a simple form that was attached to your agenda item that asks some questions. We do have a median income requirement. They need to explain how they were impacted by COVID, either through furlough or reduced hours or those types of things. And then through discussion, well, and so it is for residents, but we also wanted to make it available for businesses as described in your council communication. And then the third category that is not in your council communication, but we discussed today from a staff perspective, is actually landlords. We have a feeling that there's some landlords during that time when they could not even, may have been left holding some bills. I know there's a few that are holding some city water bills that are fairly significant. And it's because of COVID that they could not move expediently on trying to get those situations taken care of. And so we would like to add landlords as the third category to be eligible. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Anybody? Mr. Greggo?
So Heather, is there a, some kind of deadline that people need to be, you know, before December, you said December, but we got to use this money up?
Yeah, so we have to have all the decisions made and all the money issued by the end of December. So I believe the deadline we were going to set for applications was December 28. We wanted to try to give people as much time as possible. But we do need those last few days to get the, those checks out the door type of thing.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Hensley?
Do you foresee that the requests for this will be higher than what we can, okay? Do you think?
I'm worried that it's not going to be that high. So to be honest, and what we've put in the wording is it's a first come, first served. So it will be there until the money is. From a staff perspective, we've, we've tried to put some placeholders on the last little bit of purchases we're going to need. And so obviously, if those come down, we can shift more money to here and, and some of that. But because of my concern that we may have more, I did reach out to the county to let them know if they've had any unmet needs, that they haven't been able to, they ran out of CARES funding, to let us know just in case because I really do want to keep that, this funding here in Alamosa County.
Thank you.
Mayor Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, V Hill. Ms. Brooks, is there a household cap dollar amount that would be allowed for the people who apply?
And unfortunately, I closed my item. So there is, and the attorney, city attorney helped us create that. So let me open it very quickly. There is, Eric, if you have that right in front of you. I closed mine to look at the calendar to answer Counselor Hensley's question.
Yes, and I'm, I'm not sure whether the mayor's question was a, a limit on the amount of funding that a household could receive, which there is, I think it's a thousand dollars.
Question, yes.
Okay.
So yes, the maximum is a thousand dollars. We don't care if it's a family of one or a family of four. But we do have the household income for filing, when they're filing the application, is 80% of the area median income.
Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Mr. Greggo?
I had one more comment. You know, as, as we look at our water bills and sewer bills, there's a group in there that have, that are quite delinquent. Is, is there a way sending some kind of notice to them or something? And I'm sure COVID has affected them some way. And try to get those, you know, get those paid up and get them caught up and stuff, you know. I think that, you know, that would be helpful to a lot of those people that probably would, would fit in, in that income bracket that, that money should be going to.
So Counselor Greggo, in addition to our, our, all of our regular promotion like Facebook, newspaper, radio, press release, all of that, we're also going to print it on the back of the utility bill. And then we'll see too, maybe if there's a, a way that we can do a mail merge for an additional, but we're definitely going to put it on all the utility bills as well.
Because a, a lot of those people don't, don't have the internet, don't have all this other stuff. So there's, I, I wish there was a way that we can communicate it that these, these are available. So there's, I, I wish there was a way that we can communicate it, that these, these are available just to help these poor people out.
The other item too, and we'll continue to brainstorm, Counselor Greggo, is I have been in contact with Callie, who handles the emergency services for La Puente. And so they do have a lot of resources for electric, not very much for water and sewer and trash. And they're, but, so we're going to coordinate with them on if she has individuals qualifying there to make them aware of our program as well.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I had a quick comment, Heather, and I have to give full credit to this idea to Lisa Lucero, who was on the meeting tonight. She saw the agenda tonight and brought this to my attention. I think it's a great idea. And I hope we can get this done is that on our communications to people to take advantage of this, can we please make sure that we also have it in Spanish?
Good deal.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That'd be really good. And, and that's all to Lisa. So thank you for that, Lisa. And just to, uh, thank you to the city for using the money the way it's supposed to be and helping folks out. That's what, that's what the money was intended for, and that's what we're doing. So thank you for that. Do we, does there need, does there need to be a motion for this, Heather?
Yes, sir. And I, I think the motion could just be authorizing the creation of a COVID-19 utility assistance program.
Okay.
I was just gonna say, I'll make that motion then to put together a COVID utility program.
I'll second that.
Uh, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, Ms. Holly.
Uh, Counselor Behill?
Yes.
Counselor Greggo?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Broyles?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, now we go to committee reports. Anybody have a committee report? Okay, I had one. I was at a, a library board meeting last night. And I'm sure you all know probably the big thing is because of COVID, they're going back to. Curbside, like, you know, picking up your books through, through drive-through and that. Out of abundance of caution and safety for the people who work there. They, they, you know, COVID, they were doing really well, then COVID hit, numbers went down really bad. But as we started to open up in the middle and end of the summer and into the early fall, their numbers were way up again. And they were going to be breaking records of how many people were visiting and books being taken out and this and that. So they're kind of discouraged with that, but they keep doing a great job and, and they, like a lot of us are, they are. They're adapting and they're pivoting. I think that's the, the key word for this year is pivoting and doing a great job handling, getting services out to folks. During the time of COVID, they are exploring the possibility of maybe doing like a, a drop-off system. So if, if someone is, doesn't want to go out and pick up a book or do the drive-through, there is a chance that maybe they might be doing a drop-off, they're looking into it. So if, if you could, counsel, I think it'd be a really good idea if maybe one of you guys sometimes maybe just shoot them a quick email to the staff there. Because they're working really hard to provide these services. Thank you. No more committee reports? Okay, we have staff announcements. Heather?
So we do have a few tonight. Wanted to let you know that we were contacted by Dawn Honeycutt. Wondering what the requirements would be if they have the Christmas parade. And what we shared with them is everything that the organizers at the Veterans Parade put together. The only thing that is different is when the Veterans Parade occurred, we weren't at Orange. We are at Orange now, which does limit the number of spectators per block. And so that is the only difference. Everything else is the same guidance that was provided to the Veterans Parade. So it's definitely doable. I also wanted to remind you that the recycling center's ribbon cutting is this Friday at two thirty. That's for their new building. I also wanted to share with council that Eric and I are continuing the discussions with the Denver Dumb Friends League and Alamosa County. Their construction is coming along really well. Part of the piece that we're working on now is what they want is a master contract with one entity. And it looks like it will be the city of Alamosa on kind of what those charges would be. And then if there's any other jurisdiction that wants to take animals there, then they would need to subcontract with us. I think the county felt more comfortable if, if we took on that, that larger contract. And as long as we get the wording that we discussed last week in there, it, it seems pretty clear cut and will be a benefit. Hopefully, it's something that other communities and counties in the valley will see some value and, and will be interested in, in wanting to do a subcontract. And it would just be the same rate that the city's getting charged as, as well. And then before I have two staff kind of give an update, I also wanted to make sure you saw the news. We are pivoting on our celebration of lights. And instead of it being an in-person, it will be a live feed that we were hoping as council members, you could still attend in, to be there. And, and we'll live feed you guys or we'll show you guys lighting up City Hall and the train and, and that kind of stuff. So it's different, but we just felt with the numbers, the way they are and, and being the city encouraging something, we needed to be careful. And in that type of event, we really don't have any way of monitoring how many people are there in the social distancing and, and that kind of stuff. So we felt that a live event would, would be best. Harry, I didn't know if you wanted to take a second to do a quick update on a few projects?
Sure, thanks, Heather. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. A few things, Heather, Heather briefly touched on the recycling center, storage building that was just completed this week. With that, they also built a loading dock that's, that's pretty important to the operations of the recycling center. Since we're brokering our own materials at this point, we got to have the ability and capacity to store bills that are subject to degrading in weather. And this certainly gives us the ability to, to store them and also kind of work the market a little bit and make sure we get the most value out of, out of our materials. Also, certainly as Heather mentioned, we'd like to invite you to the ribbon cutting this Friday afternoon at two thirty. So that'd be great to see you there. And then the other project we have is the Craft Water Tower. That's kind of been on everybody's radar. They're just about done with the exterior painting. They did completely Mean Moose logo on the west side yesterday, which is pretty cool. They'll continue working on a tower here probably for the next two or three days, and then it's going to be mostly cleanup. So they just about have that wrapped up and they do, they've done a fantastic job. The school district's been great to work with in, in getting the logo in place. Annie Leverse kind of been instrumental in the placement and, and finalizing the logos. So we appreciate their efforts as well. So that's all I have.
And then we also had Chief Anderson giving some of the news recently to just give you a brief update on what he can share at this point in time.
I'm here, I'm just waiting for the camera. Sorry, I think I broke this thing after using it so much lately. Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor. It's great to see everybody tonight. Just a quick update on, on what we've, what we've been working on. I know there's a lot of rumors going around right now. So I guess I'd like to, I'd like to maybe put an end to that, and I will here in just a sec. But as long as you guys are aware of what we're doing. So we've been working a missing person case since the beginning of September. Details from that case, from what the investigators have been working, have led us to a different location in Canales County, which would be specifically in La Salsas, which is down by Sanford, just north of New Mexico. So during the search of property, we have been working with Colorado Bureau of Investigations, and we've been working with other local agencies from around the San Luis Valley. Uh, we have located skeletal remains. They've been identified as being human remains. They have not been identified. So I cannot tie those into any specific names. And I cannot release information related to the case right now based on it being an active, ongoing investigation. We do have a suspect in our case, and we have, we did a press release today with CBI. So I'm sure most, most of you all have probably seen it. We released the suspect's name. We released the suspect's picture, which is basically plastered all over social media right now. I'm sure it'll be in the newspaper on Thursday. Uh, just to clarify, so I can, I can say I've done the same thing for every meeting. Suspect's name at this time is Andre Baroz. And that spelling on that is first name Andre. It's A-D-R-E. First of Baroz, B-A-R-O-Z. His date of birth is ten twenty-eight of nineteen ninety-four. Numerous tattoos, facial tattoos, things like that. The warrant right now is, is for homicide, I believe first degree assault and secondary kidnapping. We are making every attempt that we possibly can to locate and apprehend this individual. Yes, I would say he is a, a threat to the community at this point. We have invited federal agencies to assist us in locating and apprehending this individual as soon as possible. And basically what I need the message to be right now to the community is, is no different from any big case we work. We need help, not just me bringing bigger agencies down with more manpower. We need help from the community to be our eyes and ears, so they can report anything suspicious, so they can contact our, I believe CBI actually has a, uh, they've got a tip line right now. And CBI is, they are working as our PIO. Okay, so they are taking all tips, they're sorting through them, they're working with our detectives who, I got to give a shout out to these guys. These guys have been working non-stop on this case. And as you're aware, we've got a limited investigations division. These guys have been doing a great job. I'm really, really happy to be working with them and I'm proud of them. So that's really all I've got, guys. We've, we've just been putting a lot of time and effort into this and, you know, it's, it's not something that we see in our, in our small community. But the, the rumors, now this is what I wanted to get to, I guess. The rumors of them, I would say it's speculation, which is somewhat irresponsible at this point of an investigation. We can't even put a title to what we have right now. So that is, it's unfortunate for us, which we have to answer those questions as to, as to why they're jumping, jumping the gun on, on placing a name on it. And I think it's just, you know, it sells, it sells papers. It really does. You know, you put a big name on it like that and people want to know what's going on. But as of right now, I can tell you, your department is doing everything that they can, working with the community and working with other agencies to make sure that you guys are all safe, our community's safe, and back to the way we need to be. Okay, so if y'all have questions for me, just brace yourself, because I'm probably going to tell you I can't answer it. So I think I've given you as much as I can, but I can try.
Anybody have any questions for Chief?
No, we appreciate the police department and what you do. I think, again, I think you're very professional and I continue to hear good comments. So thank you for all your efforts, Chief and your, and your staff.
Ms. Hensley?
I'll just echo what Council, Councilman Broyles just said. And Chief, I did watch your stream from this morning, and I thought you represented us very well and was very professional. You did a phenomenal job. And thank you to you and your crew, and I know to everybody who's working hard on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Yeah, I just want to echo the same comments of Mr. Broyles and Ms. Hensley. Chief, thank you for all your hard work and your, your, your crew's hard work. We support you a hundred percent and, and you're going to go get them. So thank you.
I'll just put a little placeholder here for the chief as well, because he wanted to make sure myself and Lisa are not surprised. Because there's some overtime coming with this. And so when we close out two thousand and twenty, just, just know that there's going to be some significant overtime. And more than the financial, just the toll that that takes on the officers as well. And, and so we're, we're eating into their personal time in order to have them do the overtime. So just FYI.
Thank you, Heather. Any other staff announcements?
Nope, that would be it, unless there's any questions from council.
I do have a quick question. Could you, could you or Harry, please quick mention what is on slate for construction next year with roads?
So next year, we'll, we'll begin and complete the final phase of First Street. So we're calling it First Street Phase Five, and that'll take us from Bell Avenue to State Avenue through that intersection. So, so that's what's on, on the docket. And then we're also getting the engineering plans together for the following year, which is State Avenue.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're, we don't have a portion of state that we're starting next year?
No, that's two thousand and twenty-two. So next year is just the completion of First Street.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're now at the agenda. The council comment. Council, any comments? Mr., Mr. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Mayor Protem Behill. I just have a few comments. First of all, I would like to thank Counselor Greggo and all of the people who worked on the Veterans Day Parade. It was a very good event. It was so good to see everyone out there. Good job. I also would like to thank Mayor Protem, Counselor Behill for stepping in tonight. As I was experiencing some technical difficulties at the hotel I'm staying in right now with a Wi-Fi connection. Thank you. It's always good to have a teammate you could just pass the ball to and you could just keep it going. So great job, my friend. Chief Anderson, wonderful job you and your staff are doing. Your overtime that's coming up is well deserved. Just want you to know that the community supports your hard effort. And people are just happy to see that we have such great law enforcement that is community-minded. So keep up that great work. Harry, you and your team, thank you again for all the work you're doing in the Public Works Department, the heartbeat of, of the city, and making sure that everything runs smoothly. And also I wanted to just reach out to Andy and let his team know they've done a wonderful job. We had that golf board, I mean golf presentation earlier in our work session that gave us a lot of helpful information on what's going on there. And council and entire staff, I just want you all to know, as we approach Thanksgiving, which is one of my favorite holidays, I just want you, each and every one of you to know that when I count my blessings, each one of you are in my blessings. And I'm so thankful to be a part of this organization, staff, team and council. Thank you, and I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greggo?
Thank you, and, and thank you, Mayor, for your comments. I just, I also wanted to bring up that we'd had a real successful Veterans Day parade. I want to thank Chief Anderson for all the work he did and Heather, the Health Department and, and all the crew that, it was good to see. I walked down, it was good to see people out. It's good to see people with their masks on and stuff. We had a, a, a flyover. We had a young lady, Mrs. O'Leary from the college that sang the National Anthem. It was just a, it was good to see the people out there and, and, and everybody, the weather cooperated and everything. And, and I just a word, you know, if you want to do something like that, there's proper way to do it. And just submit your, submit your, your permits, work with the city, work with the chief, work with whatever. And it can happen, you know, and, and, and it's, and you, there's a way to do it safely. And I, I think the Honeycutts will find that out too, you know, that, that it, it can work, you know, but we need all to work together. And bottom line, we're just want everybody to be safe and, and healthy, and that's it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Regal. Anybody else? No, okay, I got a, I got a quick few. I'm wondering if, if the city can look at Seventh, Eighth and Ninth and Tenth Street between State and Ladue. I've got a few phone calls from people who live down there who have said that people turning off either State or Ladue, they build up speed and they get going real quick down those roads, because there's no, there's no. State or Ladue, they build up speed and they get going real quick down those roads, because there's no, there's no stop signs. So I'm wondering if we can look into that, and maybe it's a safety issue for kids playing and riding their bikes and playing basketball outside and stuff like that. So if you could please take note of that and just maybe check it out, I'd appreciate it.
Sir, Counselor V Hill, can you say those streets again?
Yeah, Seventh, Eighth, Ninth, and Tenth between State and Ladue. Thank you. And then the recycling center, Harry talked about a little bit. I don't know if anybody's been down there in a while, but they have like a new setup with, I, I go there probably once or twice a month. I think it works out really well. It's more mainstream, it's, people can get, can get in and get out. So I thank you, Harry, for doing that. And then just want to push, I know we all pushed this really hard back in the spring and early summer about shopping local. Now that we're in a different, what is it, a, a new level, we're in Level Orange, especially restaurants and bars and that, their capacities have, have gone down. I urge everybody in our community, if and when you can, to shop local by, you know, you can do, you can do takeout. But we, we answered the call in spring, and we gotta do it again now. So those are my comments tonight. Thank you. Okay, if I, if there's nothing else, we don't, there's no need for the executive session. If there's anything else, I am going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving.